Evening, everyone. Okay, I have six o'clock and we'll go ahead and begin by calling the San Bruno City Council's special meeting of April the 6th, 2021 to order. And may I please have roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here, sorry, running.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. We're going to move on to item three and I'm just going to take a moment to pause. This is for public comments for items not on the agenda. So if your desire is to speak on the study session tonight, which is a continuation of the storm drainage, this is not the time that you would want to have your hand up and speak. This is if it's other than that topic on the agenda, I would ask if you would please put your virtual hand up and we will call upon you. City Clerk?
I see one, one hand just dropped, so I see one hand raised. It's Adrian Cole. Hey Adrian, can you hear us?
Yes, but I didn't have a question, I'm sorry. I'm just being nosey.
Oh, okay.
Mute myself.
Not being nosey at all. That's great, thank you for being here. Okay, seeing no other hands up, we will go ahead and move on to item number four, which is the study session. This is to hold the continued public hearing to consider protests and testimony regarding the storm drainage and flood protection fee and consider resolution submitting storm drainage and flood protection fee to property owner mail ballot election. And what we, again, this is a continuation from the March 23rd meeting. What we're going to do is we're going to turn it, just so we have some idea, we're going to turn it over to the city manager and his team. They're going to give a slideshow presentation, some similar information from the last time and some new, and that could be about an ETA of about 30 minutes. I'm going to then ask the council if they have any immediate question before we turn it to the public. And then I'm going to ask for all of you through the presentation, you're welcome to put your virtual hand up, and then we will move to the public comments and then we will come back to the council. So with that said, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and City Manager. My name is Javon Grogan and I'm, I'm having the pleasure of serving as the city manager for the city of San Bruno. I'm here tonight to provide a presentation on the proposed storm drainage and flood protection fee. I'll be joined tonight by Jimmy Tan, our Public Works Director, who will be participating from another location. So let's begin. So the objective of tonight is to hold a public hearing to consider protests and testimony regarding the storm drain and flood protection fee. And we will ask the city council to consider a resolution that would submit that fee to property owners for an election. As the city council and the public will remember, we did have a first public hearing on March 23rd. We had a number of public comment and protests that were received at that meeting, and this is a continuation. You know, I will also apologize to any members of the public that attended that March 23rd public hearing, but unfortunately due to the late hour or due to the technical difficulties we had at the beginning, we're not able to give their public comment. We did take the step in mailing out a postcard to every property in San Bruno for this meeting, so hopefully you have the opportunity to share your comments, and I know we received a number of them by mail. So the agenda for tonight is we'll provide an overview of our water utilities, we'll discuss the storm water funding challenges and our stormwater fund and the health of it. We'll review our stormwater infrastructure, current projects and some of our unfunded needs. We'll also discuss a few frequently asked questions. We'll then go in, in the fifth item to review the Prop 218 process that we are currently in the middle of and talk a little bit about our public outreach. As the mayor mentioned, we will have a time for council questions on the information that staff presented, and then we will have public comment followed by a discussion and direction from the city council tonight. It's also worth noting that for a lot of you that attended the prior study sessions or some of our other community outreach engagements, a lot of this will be repeat. But we have some new members of the public likely attending today, and so we'll, we'll give the full presentation. First off, here in the city of San Bruno, your city maintains and operates three water-related utilities on your behalf. The first one is our potable water system or drinking water system. That's a network of pipes that delivers clean drinking water to every home and business in the city. The next is the sewer system, which is also called the wastewater system. That is a network of pipes that conveys the brown or used water to our water, our water quality control plant that we jointly operate with the city of South San Francisco, and there the water is treated before discharging into the bay. And lastly, there's our stormwater system, and that's the system we're talking about tonight. That collects rainwater, rainwater runoff and conveys it to the creek prior to discharging it into the bay. That water is not treated prior to discharging into the bay, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And with regard to our three water systems, the first two did have significant funding challenges approximately five years ago, and the city embarked on a rate study and unfortunately had to increase rates by 5%. And so there has been four years where our water and sewer rates have gone up by 5% each year. And so I know residents have been paying that as a necessary payment to solve some of the challenges we've had in those systems. And unfortunately, tonight, we're talking about the challenges in our stormwater system. So first, let's talk about our long-range financial forecast in the storm, in our stormwater. Unfortunately, what we know and what we talked to the city council about when we adopted our 1920 budget was that the fund is projected to go negative, and it's projected to go negative in our 2122 fiscal year that will begin in July of this year. And so that's really one of the main thrusts of why we're having this conversation, because there is a fiscal imperative for our stormwater system. Unfortunately, the annual charges are not covering O and M operations and maintenance, nor is it recouping enough revenue to cover capital improvement projects. And as the director will talk about, we do have a list of needed capital improvement projects. The first list is approximately $30 million that, as you can see from this slide, with revenues exceeding expenditures, there's really just not the resources to, to pay for those, and that's been that way for quite some years now. The current stormwater fee that every property in San Bruno pays has not been increased since 1994. That rate is for most properties, actually all properties under 11,000 square feet, so it's the vast majority of our, of our parcels. There's a one-time payment of $46 a year that's paid on, on the property tax bill. The system is aging, as you're hearing a little bit from our Public Works Director, the system is approximately 100 years old, and there are several core backbone components that we know need attention. And unfortunately, this is one of those systems where the need is there, whether we have the funds and the enterprise utility to pay for them or not, those capital improvement projects at some point will have to be done, and we've had failures of the system, and the general fund is the backstop. And that takes money and resources away from other general services programs, and we'll, we'll, we'll present some examples of where that has occurred over the last two years. This next slide, I want to present, this is our current fee structure. So as I've said before, it's an average of $46 per parcel per year for all parcels over 11,000 square feet. This again has been the structure since 1994. That is true for all properties except agriculture, vacant or condominiums, those are charged at a slightly different rate. On average, the minimum for those parcels is $23.08, but the vast majority of our parcels are paying $46. So a risk to the general fund, unfortunately, enterprise utilities are supposed to cover their full cost. When they don't, they become a risk to our general fund. And unfortunately, stormwater is one of those systems where it's not just that it may potentially impact the general fund. Our stormwater system has impacted the general fund of approximately one, to approximately 1.5 million over the last two years. And so we've had some failures in the system and we've had to address those. Some of those notable failures include the Crestmore Canyon landslide that I know members in the community will remember because we were forced to close a lane on San Bruno Avenue for that slide that began in December of 2019. That slide was actually caused by a storm drain pipe that runs south to north under San Bruno Avenue, and water would come out of the storm drain pipe and eventually eroded the hillside. That was a capital project that unfortunately the city did not have the funds to undertake to improve the situation, and the hillside gradually eroded, causing us to spend immediately a million dollars to stabilize a portion of San Bruno Avenue. The next project was a drain covert that you'll see a picture from the Public Works Director's presentation. That was discovered in January of 2020, and that cost approximately $450,000 to repair that, that pipe, and we are still working on a repair to the hillside that may cost another $350,000. We have an undersized pipe on Spiglass that is projected to cost $1.5 million. The good news is that the city has applied for and received a grant for that project. And as many people in the community know, there's a long history of heavy floods and rain events that cause flood damage to downtown, our lower line areas, but it's just not exclusive to downtown, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So achieving fiscal sustainability in our stormwater system has been a part of the city's comprehensive fiscal sustainability project. This is an extremely important effort as we need to protect the health of our general fund and ensure that we have funds for all of the other general services that the city provides, be they recreation services, police, fire, library, or some of the other administrative functions that our residents depend on. And so we launched this effort in September of 2020 with a stormwater fee project that you'll hear a little bit about, and then we embarked on the 218 process after communicating the need to the city council. And so that process really begun in earnest in March of this year, and it's projected to go through June of 2021 pending the outcome of tonight's public hearing. So next, I'll turn it over to Director Jimmy Tan, that will talk a little bit about our stormwater infrastructure in detail.
Thank you, City Manager Grogan. Next slide, please. So here's a quick overview of the city storm system. As the city manager mentioned, you know, the system's over 100 years old. It was installed originally back in the 1900s, and the system consists of, you know, drainage which captures the surface water from the roadways and convey the water into underground pipelines, you know, as large as 72 inches in diameter, and eventually into large concrete box coverts. And some of these box covert structures are as large as eight to 10 feet wide and a five to eight feet high. And the picture on the bottom right hand of the slide shows an example of what the box covert looks like. The storm system flows by gravity from west to east and discharges into the San Bruno Channel, which is located behind the residential properties on the east side of Seventh Avenue and near Cupid Row. And within the city, there are two pump stations which were built back in the 1960s. Both are owned and operated by and maintained by the County of San Mateo. The city completed the stormwater master plan back in 2014, and it has recommended, recommending, recommendations for capacity improvements, totaling more than $26 million in 2014 estimate. Since there's inadequate funding, none of these projects have been implemented. Next slide, please. There's a map from the stormwater master plan that shows the various watersheds in color along the, along with the, the stormwater system that were modeled. There are six different watersheds, you know, shown in different colors. In order to determine the capacity deficiency in the stormwater system, hydraulic analysis or modeling was performed, and the model included the main trunks in each of these watershed that forms the backbone of the system. And those, you know, lines you see, you know, within each watersheds are, are considered the backbone or the trunk lines that were modeled. The model indicated that flooding occurs in all of the six watersheds during the 25-year storm event, and the prominent areas are noted on this map with the red dots and improvement recommendations were included in the stormwater plan report to address these issues. Next slide, please. So as we know, you know, flooding can happen anywhere in the city. This slide shows a sample of various flooding events that happened in the city. As you can see, the flooding location can be located either, you know, at the S, either at the east or west of El Camino. One area that flooding has occurred in the past in the east of El Camino is along Quentinon Avenue, that the city has experienced multiple flooding locations on the west of El Camino as well, such as, you know, Valleywood Drive, San Bruno Avenue. Therefore, you know, the flooding events can occur regardless of whether where we live, if the system is unable to convey the flow during the storm events. So next slide, please. So here's just some pictures of various flooding that happened throughout the city back in 2014 and, and also in 2017 storm event. So you see on your left-hand slide, you're there's Crestwood Drive as you're driving up south along Crestwood Drive, as you're heading over to the intersection of, of Rodenwood Drive. And also you see San Bruno Avenue on the right-hand side, near, it is the easterly direction along San Bruno Avenue, near Bay Hill. Those locations flooded in 2014. Next slide, please. And here's a picture that shows the flooding event back in 2014 along Quentinon Avenue. Next. And here, again in 2014, pictures of Valleywood Drive, near intersection of Crestwood Drive, and on the right, you know, you see El Camino, real near, near City Hall that flooded in 2014 as well. Next, please. So since the master plan was completed in 2014, there are only minimum improvements that were made to the storm system, and most of these were, you know, were brought to council due to the need for emergency repair resulting for, from the failed storm pipeline to mitigate any erosion. So the first is the Crestmore Canyon project, which the city manager mentioned. There was a local emergency declared due to a soil erosion in the canyon back in December 2019, and we, the city procured services of a contractor to assist in the design and construction of the wall to stabilize the, the roadway as well as the prevent for the erosion. The total cost of that project is over a million dollars. And the second project, which the city manager also mentioned as far as to the erosion and the pipeline around Crystal Springs Road, this was the pipeline near SFPUC's easement, which had to be mitigated. So that project is estimated to cost $450,000. The next project is the Masson Box Covert Replacement Project, which was completed back in 2017. That is, project is a result of a storm event that happened in 2014, which damaged the box covert. The two damaged box covert top slabs were removed and replaced as part of this work, and one is Masson and the other one is East Eastern, and the total cost was about $920,000. And the last here, the, lastly, you know, there was a lot of stormwater spot repairs that were performed on these storm drain pipelines as, you know, the city begins to televise our storm drain pipelines, we find all these defects. So we, you know, from 2017 and 2019, we spent over $800,000 for these, the spot repairs for the storm system. System, next. So just some pictures of the various projects that were completed. Again, this is Crestmore Canyon's project. I don't know that, that was, that included the construction of the wall. This is, the location is across from the Nordies, just adjacent to the San Bruno Avenue. Next. Crystal Springs Road Storm Drain here, this is the one located, you know, with the, near the SFPUC easement. There's a failed corrugated metal pipeline that basically eroded the hillside, and we had to reroute the, the storm drain pipeline, and then we're trying to figure out a way to restore the, the eroded area within the county park. Thanks. Masson Box Covert, this is the one that, you know, the top slab had to be removed and replaced, you know, as you can see on the top left corner, you see the, the box covert basically uplifted the entire roadway, and then it basically had to be removed and then replaced, so that you see all the pictures of the restoration that was being done for the box covert replacement project. Next. So besides those projects, you know, what else have we completed? You know, just a list of our various future unfunded projects. The first is the Spiglass Storm Drain Project. This location, the neighborhood experiences flooding during severe storm events due to pipeline capacity issues, and staff has been on site every year replacing, every year placing and removing sandbags and multiple properties, you know, within the neighborhood. And the design has already commenced, and we're at the final 100% design stage, and the total project cost is estimated to be about 100, 1.5 million dollars. We actually submitted a hazard mitigation grant a while back for this project, and the city was recently made aware that we were successfully, we will receive the grant in an order of about 1.6 million dollars, so therefore we would need to pay about 25% of the cost for this project. So it shows that, you know, the city share is now approximately $400,000 for this project. There's the, there's the capacity projects that were identified in the storm master plan, and none of those projects have commenced. So the total cost is approximately $30 million in today's cost. And as previously mentioned, the storm master plan didn't include any condition assessment, so the replacement cost based on storm system conditions is estimated to be about $23 million as well. And in addition, there are also municipal regional permits requirements that all agencies, you know, that needed, need to comply by installing green infrastructure or implementing regional stormwater capture systems, and the cost for those installing green infrastructure is, is currently unknown. Next slide, please. So just some pictures of the storm system that was captured using, using the city's CCTV camera. The top two pictures are of the failed corrugated metal pipelines, you know, the picture on the upper left shows holes and voids in the pipeline, and the upper right shows the collapsed pipeline. And the bottom picture shows the condition of existing box covert. These box coverts, again, are concrete structures that convey a large amount of water, and as you can see from the picture at the bottom left, the reinforcement bars or steel bars are exposed and corroded. And in the bottom right picture shows more concrete that have fallen apart from the ceiling of the box covert structure. So, and none of these, the box covert locations have been repaired because there's, the city doesn't have any, you know, funding to, to replace or, or rehab all on, all these large locations, or these large infrastructure. Next.
And so this next slide shows one of the impacts to our businesses and status quo. A lot of what, a lot of what we're talking about is subterranean. You can't see it. And when we launched this project, we really launched this project based on the clear financial need and, and what we know the subterranean infrastructure looks like. But the image we have on this screen just shows one business in our community that has had sandbags out in front of their business during the winter for the last five years. And they do that because they have lost thousands of dollars because the storm drain that runs in front of their business frequently floods during heavy rain events. And so the current status quo is that this business owner, during the winter, when they lock their doors, they put sandbags in, in front of their business because they don't know if it rains, if a bar storm drain system is going to flood and impact their business. It's also unsightly. And the picture in the bottom right-hand corner is the business next door to it, a dry cleaner that has their sandbags inside. And as Jimmy and I are going on various presentations around the community articulating about the challenges with our stormwater system, this slide just really, or these pictures, mind you, just really stuck out to us because it's, it's the reality of our system where we frankly just don't have enough funds to maintain it, so we're not unduly impacting our, our businesses. And so now we'll talk a little bit about the stormwater fee study and the results of that.
Sure, thank you, City Manager. So in regards to the post-stormwater fee, the city acquired the services of Woden Financial Services to assist in developing a methodology for charging stormwater costs in a fair and equitable manner across all properties in the city. Since all properties discharge stormwater, you know, to the city's storm drain system, you know, all properties within the city uses the storm drain system. So therefore, those fees are proportional to, you know, each parcel's fair share of the annual cost of improvements. So this slide shows the difference between impervious and pervious surfaces. The impervious area of a parcel is the portion of the, the parcel that is like covered by rooftop, walkway, patio, driveway, or any other harsh surfaces that are either, that either prevents water into the soil or causes water to run, you know, off the surface. The pervious areas are lawns, dirt, or landscaping areas where water is allowed to enter into soil. So the calculation of the proposed stormwater fee is based on the impervious, you know, the surface area or the square footage area. Next slide, please. This slide shows the various recommended improvements projects from the stormwater master plan that was completed in 2014. So there are 14 projects identified for improvements ranging in, in different estimated costs with a total cost of over $26 million in 2014. Again, due to inadequate revenue to complete these projects, these projects haven't been completed, and then in today, the cost of these improvements is estimated to cost, with inflation, to be about $31 million. Next slide, please. So this slide shows a, a median fee for various zoning category. The residential, you know, R1 zone has the most number of parcels in the city with approximately, you know, over 8,700 parcels. So with that, you know, the fee for the single-family residential zone is calculated to be approximately $154, which is about, you know, $100 higher than the existing residential parcel stormwater fee of $46.16. And then the median fee for the commercial parcels is estimated to be about $2,500. Next slide, please. So the city recently conducted a proactive review of the residential commercial properties that have large parcels, since the initial analysis, you know, did not accurately assess the impervious square footage. So under the fee studied by Woden and presented to council back in January, you know, it's 60% of the surface area for the residential parcels, which are residential, is presumed to be impervious area. But some of these, you know, back portion of these parcels is, you know, are unimproved, and 60% standard would overstate these impervious areas of these, usually large parcels. Therefore, we went back and reassessed these parcels, and we identified, or Woden and staff identified approximately 270 parcels throughout the city for reevaluation. So as a result, you know, these, we evaluated parcels will have their annual charges reduced. Some of these parcels are located, you know, in the Sea Cliff area, Sea Cliff Drive, Spiglass Drive, Riviera Court, Fleetwood, Longview. So the final study presented to council with the staff report has been modified to apply a lower percentage pervious surface for these parcels, and the fee has been modified to reflect the changes as well. For those affected property owners, staff will send a letter to the owners of each affected parcel explaining the change and the reduction in these proposed storm drainage fee at a later time. Next, please.
Okay, frequently asked questions. So when we give these presentations, generally everyone agrees that the system is in a state where it needs an infusion in cash, and we need enough money to cover the operations and maintenance, and the longer we wait, the more expensive the projects get. But there are a couple frequently asked questions, and we thought that we would highlight four of them in tonight's presentation. And these are sort of the, sort of the more pointed questions that we get. So the first one is, can the city fund our stormwater needs from the general fund? What has the city done to improve its finances other than, other than tax residents? Why can't the city use the $50 million from the San Bruno Community Foundation for stormwater infrastructure? And can the city apply for grants to solve our stormwater problem? So let's take a moment to go through. Can the city fund our stormwater needs from the general fund? You know, one truth about San Bruno is San Bruno has been a under-resourced city for decades. And the reality is that San Bruno has a revenue problem, not a spending problem. And, and, and one slide, I hope to make that point to you. Annually, the city must make very difficult decisions on what general services and capital projects that we have the ability to find. It, it's the nature of, of, of the resources that the city receives. Most recently, in our 1920 budget, we had a $4 million shortfall at mid-year, and when we adopted the 2021 budget, the current budget cycle we're in, we had an $8.2 million deficit. That $8.2 million deficit- That eight point two million doll- dollar deficit roughly was about four million of our structural deficit. Annually revenues expending, uh, needed, revenues expending the expenditure need. And then the other four million was immediate revenue loss due to COVID-nineteen. And so we have to grapple with that and, and, and as the city always does, uh, we budget tightly, uh, and, and we make tough decisions. And so unfortunately, uh, over the last two years, this city has had to defund a number of needed capital improvement projects, projects that we were able to fund. Uh, but due to deficits, uh, we, we had to cut. We reduce services, uh, we use our reserves, uh, we reduce the money that we're set aside to replace uh equipment that we know we're consuming and we use and, uh, and that we're putting in a sinking fund. But, but when you have a challenge, unfortunately, you have to make that decision. The city also reduced positions and froze a number of vacant positions. As we sit today, the city has nearly twenty-three positions lighter this year than they, than we were last year. And we uh postponed progress on other needed enhancements or un, un, unmet needs. The reality in San Bruno is the needs uh always outstrip the resources. And so this is the slide that we provided to the city council when we adopted our nineteen, our, our, our twenty-twenty-one budget. And it was a, a look back at some other cities. And so this shows our annual revenue per, per capita, per resident. And so just looking at our neighboring cities, uh, San Bruno is the second uh to the lowest, uh, uh, second to the lowest only next to, to Daly City. And so we have a revenue problem, we do not have a spending problem. This city uh budgets tightly, it has a history of budgeting tightly frankly because we have to. The next question is, what has the city done about this, right? We, we know budgets are tight, what have you done about this? Uh, and so uh, what I wanted to talk about here is the comprehensive fiscal sustainability project that we launched in twenty uh November of twenty eighteen. Uh, and it very much was a comprehensive, multi-year, multi-pronged project to really forthrightly go out and address our, our financial challenges. And, and so I won't go through everything uh, uh, we did, but I will provide a highlight. We kicked off this project in November of twenty eighteen, uh, with the project scoping, we identified resources, uh, we, we, we first identified the problem. Uh, and so let's talk about some of the uh completed uh initiatives that we have, because they, they have not all been tax revenues. Uh, and so initially, um, in, in February, we adopted a comprehensive set of development impact fees. Um, we did not have, we, we did have a few development impact fees, namely uh affordable housing, but we did not have a comprehensive set that was really on par with our neighboring jurisdictions. And we didn't want to be the most inexpensive place to build nor the cheapest, but we wanted to be on par. And so we increased our del- development impact fees so new development can pay their fair share. They can't pay for all of our needs by law, but they can pay for uh their fair sharing, we did that. We developed a long-range financial forecast to tell us what the, what the trajectory is, where our revenue is going, where our, our, our expenditure is going. Uh, so we can really have visibility into the future and it is a living and breathing document. Uh, and we adjust that and we, we, we of course had to adjust that for COVID-nineteen. Um, uh, we put measure G on the ballot uh in November of uh twen- uh twenty nineteen. And that is projected to bring in four million dollars annually, that was a pre-COVID revenue number. Uh, this year is projected to bring in two point five million. Uh, and the, the community and the council really wanted that, that revenue to go to another uh, uh significant need in our city and that's our roads. Um, now we need to be spending approximately eight million dollars uh a year on our roads. And measure G uh at four billion dollars a year was intended to be uh a significant push in the right direction. Now unfortunately, due to COVID-nineteen, we did have to use a portion of measure G to plug that eight million dollars hole. But I know in a, uh, uh, that, that the city council uh has a commitment that uh measure G will go towards infrastructure uh and, and we, we are continuing to work towards that. A conversion of PG&E community service hours uh for the Crestmore Canyon wildfire mitigation project. And so in early, actually beginning in late twenty nineteen, but in early twenty twenty, uh, we worked with PG&E and uh the court that is over the PG&E probation for the twenty-ten Crestmore explosion. And we were able to convert volunteer community service hours to three million dollars to address this city's most significant wildfire risk and that's Crestmore Canyon. And we were able to launch that project this year with defensible space clearing in, in the canyon. And throughout this, we're, I, I'm just giving a highlight, but we're, uh, we're constantly going through, uh, keeping expenditures low, uh, negotiating the, uh, community benefits. Uh, the next thing we did in early twenty-twenty-one is we looked at the health of our enterprise funds. Uh, and that's partly what we're talking about here today. Because of the, the actions of the city council uh with regard to water and sewer rates, those funds are healthy. Our enterprise funds that are not healthy are our stormwater fund and our city net fund. And we are constantly working on both of those. Next was the Mills Park community benefits and we negotiated a ten million dollar community benefit package with, with Mills Park. That when that development occurs, uh, will contribute community benefits to help offset some of the needs in San Bruno. Uh, uh, toward the middle uh and, and late latter part of twenty twenty, we negotiated a sales tax participation agreement with Walmart dot com. Uh, a twenty-five year agreement that's projected to bring in uh approximately three point six million dollars a year. That's great news. Unfortunately, one of the challenges is that we began that process with nearly a four million dollar structural deficit. Um, and, and so uh, while those funds are, 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 are an excellent contribution, unfortunately, uh, in large measure, those funds will, will not be available to address uh the needs here we're, we're talking about here. In November of twenty twenty, uh, there was a hotel room tax, a two percent increase taking our hotel room tax from twelve percent to fourteen percent. Again, putting uh that tax on par with uh some of the other charges in the county. And then the ability, the ability to tax marijuana businesses up to ten percent should they become uh legal in San Bruno. And that brings us to where we are, we're looking at other long-term strategies. Uh, we're constantly doing a lot of work on economic development and community benefits. We're looking at selling and repurposing surplus city property. Uh, and again tonight, we're talking about our stormwater fund and the solvency of that fund. The next FAQ is, is with regard to the San Bruno Community Foundation and the fifty million dollars um uh for a large community project. And so the question is why isn't the city using that fifty million dollars towards the stormwater effort? Uh, it's worth pointing out that the use of the, the fifty million dollar PG&E restitution funds really was a community-wide effort. That began in twenty fifteen uh with listening sessions and, and engagement sessions and dot exercises where the community uh really assessed where those funds should go. And what was selected was replacement of our recreation and aquatic facilities as the most desired use of those funds. As a part of that endeavor, uh, when the design team looked into various options uh with, with regard to replacing the rec center, one thing that's not widely known is that they looked at a reuse option. Uh, and, but unfortunately, uh, there's significant structural deficiencies with uh the current recreation center. And if the determination was that it is cheaper to replace that building than, than to retrofit it. And so we, we, we embarked on fully designing the project, we received construction bids within the last two weeks. And we're waiting on our permits and, and planning a, a groundbreaking for that building. It will have a new gymnasium, an indoor aquatic center, potentially an outdoor aquatic center, a beautiful fitness room, a community hall where the communities can have gatherings, um, large-sized gatherings. The, the type of facility that we currently don't have, as well as, as well as other classrooms and recreation amenities. And so since twenty fifteen, uh, the engagement session and the community engagement really set the tone for what this building will be. Uh, and we're, are, are happy to embark on this project and look forward to bringing this beautiful facility to the city of San Bruno. And then the, the final uh FAQ is what, can the city apply for grant funds to solve our stormwater problem? And the answer there is yes and no. And so yes, absolutely grant funds are, are possible. But we should not anticipate grants to cover the full cost or even come close to covering a, a majority of our stormwater uh funding challenges. Uh, and the, the funding challenges that we have with stormwater are, the fund is projected to have a negative balance next year. The annual fee of roughly forty-six dollars per parcel is insufficient in and of itself just to cover operations and maintenance. It also, as, as you've heard, has not been able to address deferred maintenance. Capital projects that we've known about uh in detail since twenty fourteen. And since that time, we have only been able to address critical needs and critical failures and for the most part pulling from other sources uh in order to do that. Because again, the general fund is the backstop. And those projects, uh, as the public works director mentioned, were init- initially projected at twenty-six million and now they're, they're, they're at approximately thirty million. And in addition, there are other uh improvements in our stormwater system for condition improvements and those are currently estimated at twenty-two point nine million. So yes, absolutely, the city has and will continue to apply for grant funds. Uh, recently, we received over three million dollars in grant funds for one, the, the spyglass project that you heard about earlier today. As well as planning, uh, money to begin planning on a regional stormwater detention project, a retention uh facility in the city of San Bruno. And that to this day uh has been nearly entirely funded by grant funds. And so we will continue to seek grant funds, we are absolutely paying attention to the, the new infrastructure bill and the potentialities of that. Um, and we are also um constantly scanning for opportunities to leverage funds here in San Bruno. But in many ways, our enterprise utility is our, is our problem. Uh, and, and um, the effort that has been um, uh, uh analyzed and being presented today is an effort to, uh, unfortunately, at this moment, increase the fee. Uh, but, but do it at a level where we're not raising thirty million dollars immediately. We're raising enough revenue to cover the O and M, the operations and maintenance, and enough revenue to take out debt so we can pay back that thirty million dollars over a thirty-year cycle. And so now we'll talk a little bit about the public outreach and community feedback. And so as I mentioned before, uh, I, I think we've had a robust uh public outreach for this effort. Uh, we issued a public survey, uh, we've done several citywide uh mailers, uh, we did a, 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 a news article in the city manager's uh e-newsletter. We have done dedicated mailing to both our local and out-of-state property owners, this is a property owner election. And so uh where we have uh individuals that live outside of town, uh, we have acquired those addresses and, and sent a notice to them. Uh, we have given community presentations to various organizations and condo associations. We created a, a, a dedicated public outreach webpage and this effort really begun in December of twenty twenty and uh we anticipated continuing uh through uh April twenty-one. So community feedback, uh, the, the cover of the survey should look familiar to the community, we received over four hundred responses. And they were all similar things uh that, that you could probably imagine, right? Repairing our, our deteriorating pipes and infrastructure is important, it prevents system failures. Uh, well, we should uh undertake these projects to reduce pollutants that flow into the bay. Because again, stormwater is not treated, it flows uh from your roof uh into the storm drain pipes uh out until, uh, out into the creek and then into the San Francisco Bay directly. Uh, we, doing these projects and caring for our stormwater system reduces costly repairs on businesses and homes. And also preventing flooding um is important because it may potentially obstruct residence and law enforcement and emergency response. So uh, we are here tonight for the continued uh protest hearing. The way the two eighteen protest process works, it is a two-phase process. Uh, where the first phase is a uh, a, what's called a majority protest. And so if there are a majority of property owners that protest, uh, that stops this effort uh in its tracks. And so there need to be a little bit over six thousand protests uh in order for that to occur. And so what's on the screen is as of yesterday, we had received three hundred and eighteen protests. And I just got word, as of the close of business today, we have received three hundred and fifty-seven protests. And so we are well under uh the required threshold in order to proceed to phase two, should the city council direct staff to do so. Uh, and as I mentioned before, there's a two-phase process, we are currently in the majority protest hearings. The next phase would be a property owner election, the detailed schedule is up there, I will not go through it in its entirety. But uh, subject to city council action tonight, staff would send out the ballots as of May first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we would conduct the election with the um, with really the bookend of the process being that we have to submit the property tax rule to the county at the end of July. Um, so July thirty-first. And so we need to conduct this process uh if we embark on it uh between essentially uh May one and July thirty-first. Uh, we have targeted uh the ballots to go out on May one with the first day to uh begin uh receiving ballots and, and close that process, or I'm sorry, the final day uh for ballots being June thir- June fifteenth. And then the tabulation and all of the detailed work that needs to occur in order for us to submit the property tax rule to the county by July thirty-first. Should the effort be successful, the new fee will go on the tax roll. Should the effort not be successful, the existing fee, again, that averages approximately forty-six dollars a, a year will go on the tax roll. The new fee on average for most uh residential homes, uh, as the public works director mentioned, is approximately a hundred and fifty dollars a year, uh, one-time paid on property tax bills. And so that concludes our presentation, we are happy to take any questions from the city council and any questions from the community, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, uh, and Director Tan for your report. We can stop sharing the screen. And folks, if you're in the audience, this would be the time in which to put up your virtual hand in order to speak on this topic. And we'll see who's in the queue and then we'll um ask for last time and then we'll announce how many speakers we have and then we'll begin with those. But first, as people are raising their hands to speak, and that would be the time to please do that. Um, I'm gonna ask the council if they have any immediate questions uh for staff regarding the presentation specifically. Okay, I'm, I'm, everybody's looking that, no, okay, thank you for the nod, that's helpful. Um, the virtual nods. Um, so uh, right now I see we have five speakers uh total. And so uh, right now, um, and those that are calling in, if you're on the uh, a landline or a cell phone or what have you, star nine is how you would go ahead and raise your hand. That is star nine for those on a phone device. Uh, other than that, this is now the time to please put up your hands, because once we go through this list, that, we will uh then bring it back to the council for discussion and deliberation. And at this time, one, two, three, four, five, I have six persons wishing to speak from the audience. And why don't we start, uh, the city clerk, please?
James Rua Gomez.
Good evening, Mayor Medina, honorable city council members. My name is James Rua Gomez, I live at eighteen sixty-one Donner Avenue, here in San Bruno. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council comprised of twenty-five unions, sixteen thousand highly skilled men and women. Tonight, we're asking that when this fee goes through, that you consider a community workforce agreement for these projects. A community workforce agreements offers benefits back to the community by hiring local contractors, local workers, local apprentices, and returning military veterans through a national program called Helmets to Hard Hats. We see this as a good policy for the city to create, to mitigate wage theft in the prevailing wage market. Wage theft is the number one crime against construction workers in the prevailing wage market today. We'd like to see that our tax dollars, whenever tax dollars are utilized for a project, prevailing wage is implemented. By creating a community workforce agreement, you avoid wage theft from these construction workers. We currently have project labor agreements or community workforce agreements all through the area, including the San Mateo wastewater treatment plant, which is being constructed right now. We also have uh the YouTube project here in San Bruno, which is a private project, being done under a project labor agreement, community workforce agreement. Um, San Bruno Elementary Park School District has a project labor agreement, community workforce agreement for their eighty-six million bond, eighty-six million dollars worth of bond work for Allen Elementary School, which for Allen Elementary School, which will get constructed soon. The Milbrae Rec Center, we have a project labor agreement on that. The city council of Milbrae directed their staff to negotiate a PLA with the Building and Trade Council, and that has happened. So we hope that we can meet with your city manager here soon and start those discussions way ahead of time. So when this work and Measure G work starts, that we will be included. I'd like to thank Jovan and Public Director Tam for their presentation. It was a very good presentation, very informational. Our sewer systems are crumbling, and we want to ensure to build them right the first time, on time, on budget. When people ask me what a union is, I say it's working families standing together. And we're here to ask you if you will stand with our working families. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dee De La Torre.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is David De La Torre. I live on the 900 block on Hensley Street. You know, since this storm drain system has been installed, we've, the city of San Bruno has experienced, you know, population growth. And with population comes development, both residential and commercial, making this, the current system, just obsolete. You know, I understand that everybody's, each individual's economic situation differs. If we could just get past this economic hurdle in discussions and get this work going, I would strongly encourage this council to sit down with the Building and Construction Trades Council, James Rua Gomez, and come up with some community workforce agreement. The building trades have the most qualified, highly skilled, highly trained. The contractors have the capacity and are the most ethical out there. So I just would strongly encourage the councils to sit down with the Building Trades Council. Thank you for your time.
For your comments. Next speaker, please.
Tim O'Brien. Also, maybe Raina.
Ah, yes, good evening. Yes, it is Raina speaking. And thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I have to say, I have one question. And one thing is the city manager has not responded to my question previously when I asked, how come San Bruno has not approved cannabis business in our city when we, the residents, already approved this? We should be getting revenue from that to put towards this issue that we have. Since so many people, a lot of residents are with limited income. You saw that when the speakers talked last time. Another thing is, okay, so we are going to have a top-notch recreation center, but the storm, our storm drain is dilapidated. I mean, it's unthinkable to think that, that we're going to have a beautiful recreation center, but everything is falling apart underneath. When this was approved, okay, we already had issues with this storm drainage, the piping. Why, the money was not allocated to that, to take care of this, rather than put it on the residents? So I would like my, I want those answers to be, those questions to be answered, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Raina, is Mr. O'Brien going to speak, or are you folks good? I just wanted to make sure I didn't exclude anyone.
Uh, hold on. No, he's not, he said.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next is Dennis Matthews. Hi, Dennis, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate, and I would like you to set this as a precedent in handling public response issues. Unlike last time, we stayed here until midnight. If you would set this as a precedent and talk about the public issues right up in the beginning so everyone could have time to have their say and to listen to the reports as you've presented it today. And then if people want to stay and listen to the rest of your meeting, that's up to them instead of being forced to stay. Anyway, appreciate that. If this passes, and I said this before, it should not be a never-ending charge. The stormwater fee should stop once project is completed on a time schedule and completion date, not an open-ended time schedule. Also, if this thing passes, there's a lot of people out here who are on limited incomes, retired, as a lot of people have already made comments about that. If it passes, they should either be exempt or maybe their fees be reduced by 50% or whatever. So it wouldn't be a burden on these people who are retired and have a minimum amount of income to work with. Also, the last thing, as I told you before, a financial advisor told me about, if this passes, the city will be liable for all residents for any and all flooding of their property in the future. As you already said, when I said that before, that people are already suing you. And so you already know that that is a process that can happen. So, I mean, it just, if this passes and you do it right, maybe, you won't have a lot of suits. But if you, for some reason, there are a lot of problems with flooding still, even after this is done, you are going to open the Pandora's Box for a lot of people, a lot of residents, to go ahead and sue because here they are paying for all this to be fixed, and they're still getting water damage somehow. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thanks for having this open forum in the very beginning. Appreciate, and I hope you would set that precedent in the future. Have a great day. Enjoy your presentation.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next is Claudia Quinn.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. It seems futile to discuss why past councils didn't address this, and now we find ourselves in this situation. But in regards to revenue, I'd like to know why the short-term rental hasn't been set up yet. We own a vacation rental in another state, a very, very small state. And every month, we send in hundreds of dollars of tax money to that state to cover the short-term rental tax. It seems ridiculous that we don't have that here in San Bruno and in California. It's a great revenue stream for the state and the city, and it should be happening here. There just seems to be a big delay in doing it. And also, we urge you to move on the cannabis dispensary issue. That's another revenue stream that we're overlooking. However, the biggest issue for us, and I heard it from one of the previous speakers, is that I haven't heard a sunset date. Once, if we hear a sunset date for when this tax will stop, that will decide our vote. So thank you very much for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And now we have our last speaker.
Okay, it took a minute to unmute. Thank you very much. The city council and the city manager have my request for stopping the flooding of my property, which happens regularly. When the gutters overflow and water comes right down my driveway, floods my garage, and continues on to two other properties past mine adjacent to City Park. I would like to urge the city council and city manager to repair the streets so they behave as they should be, to have the gutters handle the stormwater and not dump it into the properties. My 2018 request was made to the city manager, the planning director, and the director of Public Works, and that has never been answered. I hope you can do it this time. The flooding is due to city construction that didn't allow for stormwater volumes, and that's why the water is being diverted into my property whenever there's a substantial rainfall. This is, my area, by the way, is not a low-lying property. It's not near Huntington. It's right next to City Park. So really, the reason for this flooding is the poor design where the road goes through City Park. I think, I said this last time, I'll say it again. I think the tax revenue was needed. It's pretty obvious. The presentation today made a very good case for it. So I'll be voting for it. I feel badly for people who are going to be inconvenienced. And it's too bad this wasn't initiated earlier. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, I had said that that was the last speaker. Two hands have come up. The last speakers will be Paul and Albert, and then it will come back to council. So those are the last two speakers. City Clerk, please.
Paul Wapinski.
Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
All right, first off, I apologize. I thought the meeting started at 7 o'clock. So some, what I'm going to ask is may it harden and cover. I want to thank Melissa Thurman and Jimmy Tan, who, first off, were extremely helpful and rapid in the responses to my questions. But I've got a couple more. Do all responses have to be written, or those verbally given during the last meeting and this meeting count? And when is the last day to submit the response? On the agenda packet, it seems to say that at the end of tonight's meeting is the last time we can submit any written comments. And the other question I had is, if there's less than 50% plus one positive responses, does the proposal fail? My last question is, there's already a stormwater fee on my property tax bill, and will this tax replace that or be added to it? And the new tax is almost 400% of the current tax. So those are my three questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last speaker is Mr. De Guzman.
Hey, Albert, I'm trying to get you unmuted.
Hello, hi, good evening.
Hi, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I do understand about our storm drainage problem and the city revenue problem, but you need to understand that some homeowners have the same money problem, too. Some states upload with the EDD check. I think this matter is being discussed and timely. Thank you.
Thank you. I know I keep saying this, but we have another hand up. This is going to be the last speaker, and it is going to be David Mitchell. And then this concludes the hearing. I think I've been gracious as far as allowing more. I keep going against what I keep saying, but Mr. Mitchell.
David, I'm trying to get you unmuted here.
Hello.
Hi, there you are. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, yes, I was up till midnight on the last meeting to try to speak. And there was a question that I did have regarding this matter. So when, why now, and when was this brought up? Are you able to answer questions right now, or is this something you would answer at the end?
If you could make all your statements and comments now, and they can be answered at the end when everybody's concluded.
Okay, so the question is, whose idea was it? Why was this brought up? And why weren't we using the funds from the PG&E settlement? And especially since this is infrastructure. Obviously, infrastructure should come first. That's why PG&E had their failure because they re-appropriated funds and they waited too long, and then we had these disasters. So now it seems that San Bruno is doing the same thing, even though we've got the money from PG&E from this. Instead of, I think, someone, one person put champagne budget on the new center. We should downsize that and use these monies for infrastructure items such as this. Another person brought up in the last meeting, when will this end? Is this going to be an ongoing thing, where we continue to increase this tax fund? I think that's another good question. Also, another caller from the last meeting brought up the fact that there's other cities that are trying to address this in a more sensible way instead of just building bigger pipes, permeable land. I see a bunch of construction going on, businesses in San Bruno right now, about a 380. And it looks like a lot of concrete. Doesn't look like, you know, they're doing, you know, things that will promote the permeable surfaces. Parking lots are building. Talked about, I think, in the last meeting, the El Camino. There's a lot of, a lot of other alternatives that we should be looking at before we just start building bigger pipes. And we should address our infrastructure, whether it's this or other issues with the city. Instead of building, you know, fancier structures, we should be taking care of what's already in place and making sure that it works for everybody. And last, I think that it's not fair that the seniors, which there's a lot of seniors on fixed incomes in San Bruno, that they would have to also be a part of this as well. So those are my statements and questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Thank you to everybody that's here at the meeting and that spoke. This is a public hearing, so before we bring it back to council and staff, the public hearing has concluded. Can I please have action from council to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we close the public hearing.
May I please have a second?
Second.
The motion and second, Salazar Medina, to close the public hearing. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
I, but I just want to say that if, it seems like for some reason, people are trickling in. So I'm also open to reopening it as people come in. Just up to the mayor, but I.
It's not up to me. We're taking an action by, so what is your vote, please?
So my vote is aye, and I guess I would motion to reopen it again. I don't know, but for right now, aye.
Thank you. Continue, City Clerk.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you, City Clerk. So we had some public speakers and some questions and/or thoughts. And I want to turn it back over to the city manager or city attorney or the director of Public Works and see if they're wanting to comment or offer any feedback on.
Again, Jovan Groban, city manager. We have notes on the questions, and why don't we just start by ticking them off? I think one of the questions we had was essentially a version of, why now? Why are we talking about this now? And the answer is, the city launched a comprehensive project to take a look at all of our fiscal challenges, not just stormwater, but citywide. And it is a financial imperative that we address this now. Our stormwater fund is projected to be negative next fiscal year. We do not have the funds to cover regular operations and maintenance, nor do we have enough funds to cover the known capital projects that we know about. Unfortunately, that is a reality. Uh, unfortunately, that is a reality. Um, uh, the fees, uh, have not increased since nineteen ninety-four, uh, and they, uh, do not cover the need of the system. There was a, another question, uh, similar, uh, to that, uh, which, uh, is essentially, um, revolves around, uh, using other funds, uh, or other city funds to support stormwater. Stormwater, it's important to note, is an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund, uh, in government speak, means that the revenues typically cover the expenditures, and you do not impact other funds. Also, for enterprise revenue, you cannot use enterprise revenue for other things. So we would never be able to use stormwater revenue, whether it's the existing revenue or the new revenue, for something else. It has to go for stormwater. And so there is the ability to use general fund revenue, uh, and we have done that. Uh, when we pass the immediate repairs or when we've needed to pull from our reserves to address a need, we absolutely have to. But typically enterprises, um, revenues and expenditures either match or, uh, expenditures exceed because you put up, um, revenues exceed because you've put a little bit in the bank, so you can pay for your capital improvement projects. Um, so, so that's the answer to that question. There was another question, um, with regard to other development, and that there's, uh, being seen other development, uh, happening around town, and we shouldn't just solve the problem by building bigger pipes. It's important to note that new development actually has to retain the new stormwater runoff that they create. And new development does that by creating retention basins and other groundwater injection features in the new development. And so it's important to note that the need for the capital improvements we're talking about, uh, and the funding of O and M is not really driven by the new developments that you see going up. Uh, it's driven by, our system is a hundred years old. It's aging, and it was actually never built for the size of the community that we are today. There was a question about, uh, the marijuana tax. Absolutely, the city council, uh, directed staff to put, uh, the ability to tax marijuana businesses on the November twenty ballot. Uh, that was done and it was approved. The next step in that process is actually to do the detailed work to go through marijuana, um, uh, to develop marijuana regulations. And I know the city council has talked about that at their retreat this year, uh, and we have not concluded those discussions. Uh, but should this, the staff receive direction from, from the city council on, uh, what marijuana businesses, uh, that we should write regulations around, uh, we will undertake that work. There was a question about having reduced fees for seniors and those on fixed income. It's important to note that we are talking about property-related charges. And, uh, when you talk about other utilities, there is a mechanism to reduce those for seniors and and, and individuals of low income. But for example, an analogous to this would be your regular property tax. There's typically not a reduction for seniors or members, uh, of the community that are low income, uh, to have a reduction in your property tax bill. And these charges that are property tax-based, uh, follow suit and do not have a reduction, uh, for seniors or, 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 or those on fixed income. Uh, it's essentially, the need is tied to the property. There was another question about using the fifty million dollars from the aquatic, uh, that has been dedicated to the aquatic and recreation center. And so we talked about that in the presentation, uh, and that community effort really begun in earnest in twenty fifteen. Uh, we, uh, have fully designed the building, uh, and, uh, we're awaiting the issuance of permits to begin construction of, of that, of that building. In addition, we noted for those that, uh, came on later, is that once we investigated the existing recreation, uh, building, uh, it has significant structural difficulties, and we would, uh, likely be replacing that whether we, uh, have the fifty million dollar grant from the foundation or not. Uh, and so, uh, that project is very much moving forward. There was a question of, if, is the new storm drain and flood protection fee additive? Or would it supplant the existing fee? The latter is true. Uh, it would supplant the existing fee, and so there's currently a fee. On average, uh, properties are paying forty-six dollars a year. That will be replaced by the new fee that is based on the, uh, unique characteristics of your parcel and how much impervious square feet, uh, is on the parcel. There was a question about written protests. By law, the only protests that are valid to be counted in that three hundred and fifty-seven protests that we have received to date as of five P M are those that were written. That said, all of the public comment that has been given tonight and at the prior hearing, it's important to note that your elected officials, the city council, uh, have heard those and received those as they, um, um, know the number of protests that we have, which is three fifty-seven. There's a, there was a question about phase two. Is it fifty percent plus one of all of those properties or of those that built? It's the latter. So in phase two, we will send out a mail ballot. That ballot can be returned either by U S mail, or it can be dropped off at city hall. In order for the new fee to go into effect, it needs to be fifty percent plus one more person of those that actually send the ballots back. So it's not on the total parcel count of, of over twelve thousand. It's on the number of parcels that actually return a ballot. There was a comment, and I think a question about, uh, city, uh, is the flooding just, uh, uh, in certain areas? Uh, the answer is no, uh, the flooding happens citywide. There was a question about short-term rentals. Uh, the city council has passed, uh, and extended our, uh, hotel room or transient occupancy tax to short-term rentals, and staff is in the process of implementing that. That revenue, uh, is approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year, is what the current, uh, estimates are that we would bring once that, that revenue starts flowing in. So, uh, that action has been taken by the, by the council and, uh, implementation is being handled by staff. And, oh, and there was a question about sunset, and so I have my big binder up here because I was looking at the, uh, fee study report that we generated. It's important to note that this is a, uh, enterprise, a utility that has, that has perpetual cost. And so, as we mentioned before, we know that there are thirty million dollars, um, of infrastructure work that is needed to the backbone system. The, uh, fee model projects raising enough revenue to bond for that and pay that back over a thirty-year cycle. There are actually three bond series that are part of this, and so the third bond series, the first two bonds are roughly fifteen million, fifteen million, that's how you get to thirty. Then there's a third bond series. But way in the back of the report, um, the financial model goes out to, uh, I think as far as twenty sixty-two. Uh, and that's because the need never goes away. And so there is no sunset provision, uh, contemplated in this because it's intended to pass a fee that is, let me say, put forward a fee that is intended to recoup enough revenue to cover O and M and capital. Uh, and there's a backbone system, there's a distribution line that are, is estimated at twenty million dollars. And so, um, throughout the report, what it envisions is that we will cover O and M, which will go up, uh, over time, of course. And then you will also bond for various infrastructure needs and pay those back over a longer-term horizon. And I believe that is all of the questions that were asked. Uh, if I, I have missed any, um, feel free to, uh, council, let me know.
Well, um, thank you for writing those down and going through, and if, um, a council member, uh, thinks there's something that maybe wasn't, then when they have their time for comments, they can address them at that time. Um, now, it's to, to the colleagues, um, questions? For staff? Or comments? Colleagues, does anybody have any questions or comment? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, lead us off, please.
Yes, thank you, um. Questions for staff in? With the roughly six hundred thousand dollars that we currently receive in revenues, after paying staff, how much is left over to fix anything? So in operating and maintaining the system, how much money is left over each year to, to actually, um, repair pipes? And here's, here's my main point. In nineteen ninety-four, this started. That, that, that forty-six dollars per parcel was identified to, uh, pay for the operation and maintenance of our stormwater system. And without inflation, clearly, it's not enough to continue with all of the work that is needed. And so just wanted some additional clarity that, as costs go up, there, there's less and less actually left over to, to fix anything.
Thank you, council member Medina. The answer to your question is, there's zero leftover. So I'm looking at the adopted budget, and you're right, the existing fee brings in just hun- just under six hundred thousand dollars. It's five hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, salaries and benefits, uh, is seven hundred and sixty-one thousand. So that alone is more than, more than the revenue. When you include the supplies and materials, another two hundred and ninety-five thousand, uh, and, and other charges, ninety-seven, uh, ninety-seven thousand. And that, that's the regular work and, and the, the, the performance and workload measures are here in the budget. It's, it's cleaning over, um, five thousand, five hundred, uh, curb miles, uh, of, of street sweeping. It's cleaning the catch stations, catch basins annually, as well as, uh, picking up, um, things that, that, that clog our storm drain system. And so no money is left over, uh, for, for capital, and there's not enough revenue to cover just the operations.
Thank you. Um, if I can continue, Mr. Mayor? With some comments?
Please do.
I'll, and actually, I have comments now, so if, if, uh, let my colleagues, uh, ask the questions, that'd probably be, uh, best use of time. Thank you.
Okay. A- any, uh, specific questions? Uh, we'll, we'll take the Vice Mayor's lead and go, uh, colleagues will not only go for questions, and then we can circle back around for comments or potential action.
I have no questions.
Okay.
I have no questions. I will have comments.
Thank you. Uh, uh, council member Mason?
I do have some questions, and then I will follow my colleagues with comments. Um, let me just pull up my questions. Um, so my first question, I'm so sorry, my screen just disappeared. Okay. Um, I did wanna ask, one of the questions that had been asked to me for Director Tan is if you could explain a little bit, and I did see it on, on the slide, but maybe simplify it even further. Uh, the fairness or the equity around what apartment owners are being charged versus those who own single-family homes?
Sure, I can, you know, do my best to do that, and then we also have our consultant on board here to, um, help answer any questions. So Chris, um, from Willdan is available to answer the questions as well. Okay, so. So, um, with the apartments, you know, the, um, apartments fall into what, you know, the categories of R four, uh, zoning category. So it was assigned an impervious, um, percentage of eighty-five percent, you know, for residential is sixty percent. And for these apartment complexes, they're, uh, signed a, a, a lot higher, eighty-five percent, uh, for impervious, uh, percentage. And, um, so with that, you know, that, that fee is transferred onto the, uh, the property owner of that, um, you know, apartment complex.
Okay, um, but when you, sorry, when I, I just kinda wanna simplify it even further. When you say they're assigned an impervious percent, uh, is that to say that, um, the apartment owner is gonna be paying, um, I guess, more, wait, hold on, percent of eighty-four percent and for residential at sixty percent? Um, can we break that down just a little bit more?
To break it down to, what, what would you like? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm thinking of like the apartment owners of the location across the street from Tanfran, right? Are they, that's a, a huge development. Uh, I think, I would imagine most developers, uh, have to already provide brand-new infrastructure when they're building something like that anyway. Um, but if not, for a larger property owner or like the location right now in El Camino and San Tito Avenue, um, what is the difference in what they're paying versus, you know, the single-family homes?
Yeah, so they will be paying a lot higher because the percentage is a lot higher, um, because it's based on the square footage of the lot, right? So, um, you know, apartment complex, um, will end up paying a lot higher, um, you know, based on this fee, comparison to the single-family homes. But, but Chris, you know, if you can, uh, come in here and it can, um, add on to whatever I've mentioned, uh, to clarify the message.
Being, uh, Chris access placed as a panelist?
All right, I'm trying, but I'm getting an error here. I'm trying to bring you in, Chris. I don't know what's going on. Okay, just one moment. I think I got it. There he is.
Okay, can you hear me? Yes, Mr. Fisher, go ahead. If you can, uh, assist in the question, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, staff members, this is Chris Fisher from Willdan Financial Services. Um, so Jimmy covered it, uh, pretty much. The, the difference is that with a, um, the residential parcel that, that is estimated at sixty-five percent impervious area, they have more, more land and yard and areas that are not considered impervious. In other words, areas that will absorb water, water will not runoff. With apartment complexes that fall into that higher density, that R four high-density category that Jimmy mentioned, um, th- those types of properties have, uh, you know, lots of parking, uh, sports courts, sidewalks, and typically less green area or, or, or imper- or permeable area, impervious area, uh, areas that will accept water and, and not have it runoff. Um, they typically have, uh, far less of that type of area than a single-family parcel, so that's why they have a, a, a rate of eighty-five percent, meaning eighty-five percent of their total parcel area. So say it's an acre. Eighty-five percent of that acre would be considered impervious, and so they would be charged the, the point oh four cents per impervious foot, um, for that area, as opposed to a residential parcel, which is charged that, that rate, um, times only sixty-five percent of their parcel. So I don't know if that helps clarify or not.
Um, so, uh, it's of the, the parcel, so it's not necessarily of the, you know, five, five stories, um, of units there. So, I mean, I just wanna make sure it's that we're, that it's.
That's correct.
Yeah, right, so it's higher.
You're correct, yeah, you're correct, council member.
More units in the apartment because you're going up. You're not just dealing with the first floor. Is that fair?
So, if I understand the question, height does not matter. So if it's a, uh, yeah, it's just, it, right.
Okay, okay, so, um, okay, my, my next, thank you for that. It, it did help to clarify that. Uh, so the property owners of some of these complexes may be paying more, but they may also be using more water that may put more pressure on the systems because you have more of a population within those buildings. Is that, is that pretty?
Right, they're generating more runoff, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, one of the questions that I've been asked recently a lot is how will the Biden infrastructure plan potentially impact the, um, our ability to obtain any funds, um, considering that this is a need now, it's been a need for a while. Um, is there any possibility that San Bruno would receive any of these funds that can be applied to the stormwater enterprise?
So, Javon, city manager, let me take that one, but I, I wanna go back and, and clarify that, that last answer because I think it's important to note that the density of the property, i.e. how many residents, um, is in a, a given property, has no bearing on the stormwater fee, either in the old model or the current model. It's based on the characteristics of the, of the, of the parcel, how much is essentially grass and how much is covered area that does not percolate into the ground. And so it's not based on, on, on residence or, or density at all. Uh, with regard to the potential Biden infrastructure plan, uh, the nearly, uh, two, two billion dollar, uh, plan that is being discussed, should any of those funds be available to offset, uh, our stormwater infrastructure need? We will certainly. uh should any of those funds be available to offset uh our stormwater infrastructure need, we will certainly apply for that. Uh it is currently a proposal uh that has been uh that is being talked about uh a- as, as we know in Washington. Uh there are a few details available. Uh we have, what we do have details on is the ARA, the American Rescue uh Act, which was nearly two mil- two billion dollars in and of itself, one point uh nine billion. There's actually a carve-out where it actually appears that stormwater is not an allowable use. Water and sewer projects and broadband projects are, but not stormwater. And, and so that's an important nuance. And so it's also important to note that with this um uh two billion dollar Biden infrastructure plan, uh the specifics will really be known uh once it's debated in Congress and, and, and passed, and uh like with the ARA, the federal treasury will decide on the a- the actual process to, to assess the funds. And so we, we will constantly pay attention, uh but as we said in the uh slide, uh, uh in the slide deck, assuming that we would receive federal or state grant funds to pay for all or even a majority of our stormwater need is not um a very likely scenario. Uh and so these enterprise systems have historically been funded locally, uh and, and we have received three million dollars to date worth of grants uh for our stormwater system, and we will continue to apply. And that three million dollars is just in the last two years.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask whether it's possible, I mean, the increase is so stark um provided where, where we are economically right now. Is it possible to um phase, as, we don't, we don't know yet if it's going to pass or not, right? So um if, should it pass, would it be possible to phase in that increase? So thirty-three percent of the increase one year, thirty-three percent the next year, and then the last thirty-three percent the third year? Just so that it's not such a, a hard hit in the, in the first year if it passes?
The city council uh will maintain full discretion over this fee annually. Uh not just in the initial rollout phase, but uh throughout the life of the fee. It, it essentially sets a maximum that we can charge. And uh annually, when the city council authorizes the tax roll that we submit to the county, uh you have the ability to reduce that. I will say that that reduction is commensurate to what uh our bonding capacity will be. Uh and so we will need to factor in any reduction on our ability to bond for funds uh in the, the projects that we can do and, and the, and the timeliness upon which we can do it.
Okay, so then for this, so tonight, tonight we're only voting on whether to proceed uh with the, with the mailing of the ballots. Um, so when would we make that determination since the ballots are going to have information on them that the voters will or will not approve?
Uh so the Prop two eighteen process begun uh when the city council authorized us to proceed with phase one. And so should you decide to proceed, the all of the valid information will be what was set back when that decision was made, and I want to say that was uh in January. Should the city, should, let's say uh the, it passes, and should the city council want to reduce the charge that goes on this year's property tax, that decision would have to be made before July thirty-first uh when we issue a notice to the county to, to levy taxes.
Okay. Um, okay, so then that, that could be done at a later time if it passes. Um, and then based on the, the pictures that we saw, I think, I mean, we're still in a drought, so um I think another question that has been asked is what are the repercussions if we continue to wait?
Uh sure, why don't I begin that, but then I'll turn it over to Director Tan, who can give a little bit more specifics. And so what it means is that uh when we begin our budgeting process um for stormwater for next fiscal year, we'll have some tough decisions to make. Uh the, the fund is projected to go negative, and uh we will likely have to supplement that with our general fund, and we will continue, continue to be in a position to where if uh capital im- improvement project, projects are needed because there's a, there's a high failure, uh we're not going to have uh bond revenue, and so we're going to be going to the city's reserves or pulling from other funded capital improvement projects. I think it, it's also worth noting that when the master plan was conducted in twenty fourteen, the backbone projects were estimated at twenty-six million, and now they're over thirty million. And so the longer we delay, the need for those projects do not go away. Uh unfortunately, they only increase. Uh and it's probably something that I think we could all agree that we can't put off forever. Uh and so we would have to embark on either a process to say the revenue is what the revenue is, and, and uh let's look at other general services or, 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 or funds that we can pull from. Uh, but at some point, uh the professional recommendation would be to not continue to defer these projects. And, and Director Tan, uh can you give a look, any more specifics on um the condition of, of the infrastructure and what may happen next?
Yeah, sure. Um I think City Manager Gogan mi- mentioned all the um information there regarding, you know, the needs for the, the system. But in regards to the um improvements, no. You, you always, you saw some of the, the uh CCTV pictures uh of that um pipelines, as well as box covers in our system, and, you know, we haven't repaired those. Um it's just not going to repair by itself overnight, right? And so, no, money needs to be spent in order for us to go ahead and remove all these, you know, failed uh pipelines and box covers so that we can actually, you know, make them uh new again. And that just costs money. Uh it's just similar to the water system and sewer system that we're rebuilding. Um, so, you know, there is a need for the, the stormwater system as well. Um, and so, you know, funding is something that is needed in order for us to go ahead and, and to be able to allow to, to us to do that, right? Um, but, you know, if there isn't any funding, yeah, you know, the funding sources, some other additional funding sources will need to be uh looked at. Um but I don't think grant is, you know, something that is sustainable. I know there is just no guarantee that the city can continue to just, we can apply for grants, but there's no guarantee that we'll get any of the grants that we, we apply for. It's, it's very rare that, you know, we'll be a hundred percent every single time that we submit an application for grants. Um, so I, I just think that, you know, I totally understand, you know, the, the concerns regarding costs. Um, but it's, 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 again, you know, that every agencies are dealing with this as well. Um Summit Hill is doing the same thing right now because every agencies are looking at their stormwater because it's been neglected over the years, unlike the water and sewer system.
Okay, thank you, um Director Tan. And yeah, I, I have heard other cities have had to pass bond measures, and they've had to find other ways to, to pay for their uh stormwater issues. Um, just a couple, a little bit more, um, a couple more questions. Um we heard tonight from some of our uh building trade um council partners, and, and I'm just curious to know the work that's done. Is this da- is this work that would be done by our staff? Would it be a mix of our staff and contractors? Um and I think it was answered in a previous meeting, but I just wanted to be answered again for the public that is listening tonight.
And, and Councilmember, can we, why do they got, can we expand upon that? Because there were, there were a couple folks uh that did ask about uh community benefit uh or known as PLA. Um and also, there was also another one that I thought of, liability. I know it was answered at the last meeting, but what happens if it passes in the liability of the city? Thank you for allowing me to expand that.
Yep.
City staff?
Sure, so um a few parts answered for a multiple, multiple part question. The first item is who will undertake the work? And so part of the work will be uh done by our, our city staff. Uh a portion of the work will be contracted out. The larger capital improvement projects that we are talking about, thirty million dollar projects, those will nearly all be contracted out. Uh and so the city is required to pay prevailing wage. Uh we as a city um have not entered into project labor agreements, uh but that is at the discretion of the city council. Uh should we be so directed, we will embark on that process uh and return to the city council with a full complement of recommendations and analysis on uh, uh what the cost implications for the capital improvement projects will be. Uh will they cost more? Will it be neutral, et cetera? Uh there are a number of factors, and, and that is a significant policy conversation that, uh while we have not embarked on, um as we do individual projects or a wholesale projects, the city council uh if so directed, uh we can entertain that and prepare that analysis. Uh with regard to the liability question, there is um the, I think the statement from the community member was if we embark on this process, we will have full liability for any uh flooding that occurs. And what you heard from your city attorney at the last meeting, I believe, was that undertaking this fee does not change the liability implications uh that we have for our stormwater system. It will simply provide more money to actually have a better maintained system and not incur events that may trigger additional liability for the city. And so uh we understand that residents hear information from various sources. Uh but that is the information that you've received from your professional staff.
Okay. Um, to the mayor, can I go?
Please, please. Thank you.
Um, so the other um question that I have is actually something that somebody sent me, and I would imagine with the funds we've spent on the mailers so far, can, can the city provide a return envelope with postage? With the ballot? It just seems like it would really encourage people to, to vote, make it a little bit easier. And I apologize, I actually should have asked you that before the meeting, but um I just remembered it as I'm typing my notes.
So off the top, uh postage is roughly three thousand dollars for a citywide mailer. Um, we uh can look into doing that. I believe with these type of elections, typically it's not done because uh people are, are given the option to drop off the ballot uh at city hall uh for free. Uh we can, we can certainly look at doing that, uh and, and the city attorney, I think, has just joined, so he can opine if there are any legal issues with, with doing that or not. Um but I think it's something that we can look into.
Right. We, we haven't been able to confirm the answer one way or another, and I agree with the city manager, we can look into that.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be um, that would be a, a courtesy to the residents. Uh, um, okay. So my other question is, I know that you've addressed the sunset issue, and, and I spoke with the city manager about this too, just because I um, I am I think torn on, on the issue because I think where, where I do understand that the um needs are going to be there and that they're going to continue, and with inflation, the cost is going to grow. I also think that as a um, a governing board, we're also making sure that there's an opportunity for the public to say we are happy with what you've been doing for the last thirty years, and we're going to support it. Uh or the opposite, we're not. Um because if, I just feel like without a sunset, the accountability factor is almost lost. It's just a, a constant revenue stream. And so I, I'd like to have a better idea of what options we have and whether that has to, that decision has to be made tonight around the sunset and whether there's a sunset in the provision.
So uh I'll take the, the first part about that question. So as, as we said before, there is no sunset planned for this, uh and the detailed uh study that you have for debt south costs as far as twenty sixty-two, uh and the costs don't go away, uh but uh this is a, a, a perpetual need, uh which is why there was no sunset. You know, I just turned to one page, and this is um page one thousand um uh twenty-nine uh, 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 uh twenty-seven of the packet. But it shows the O and M costs projected for two thousand and forty-seven. And that's two point nine million dollars. Let's say we had a sunset for that date. We would sunset back to our current fee, which would be raising uh five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And right now, we're a few hundred thousand dollars short of our O and M. And if we had a sunset provision, uh at that point, uh we would be several million dollars short of our O and M. Uh and, you know, it's also worth noting, we're here in um twenty twenty-one, and, and so the concept of the work that is uh being done is to not sort of raise thirty million dollars today, but to raise enough funds to cover O and M, to put some money um uh aside to cover ongoing needs that, that other capital projects, but also to bond for that uh for that thirty million dollars. So we're not recovering thirty million dollars today, we're, we're recovering enough to pay the debt service. And so when those um debts are paid off, if we had, let's say, a thirty-year sunset, uh and I'm just going to year twenty fifty, uh the O and M will be three point two million dollars. And so then we would sunset back to a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar fee. And, and so that, that's really why a sunset wasn't um uh projected here because one, the needs are, 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 are significant. Uh the current fee, uh as we all know, is inadequate. Um, and what I would say, the accountability uh is there in multiple ways. One, there's all the internal controls uh and financial controls that, that we have in the auditor beds every year. Uh two, there's all five of you guys. You guys are the elected representatives uh for this community. Uh and the fee sets a maximum that can be charged. If we ever get to a point where that fee needs to be lowered, it's like our debt limit. We have a high debt limit, but we don't just take on uh excess debt. And so the council does have the ability to lower that fee uh a- as, as we mentioned earlier. And another accountability mechanism is this property tax-based assessment for the enterprise. All of the revenue has to be spent on stormwater. We can legally not spend a dime outside of caring for our stormwater system. So this cannot be the slush fund for um uh taking care of, of building the, the uh, a, a new aquatic center in thirty years. That's not what these funds could ever be used for. And so that's important for people to know, uh because there is accountability built in into how this fee uh is, is configured.
Thank you, City Manager. Um I just want to go back to the question, though. Can that decision, when would that decision have to be made?
Yes, so the, the decision for a sunset, uh so I'll ask the city attorney, thank you, uh that's the other person. I'll ask the city attorney to pipe in. Uh I, Mark, will you address that?
Sure. Uh the, the ballot provision would have to be determined uh before the ballots go out because if there is going to be that sort of provision, it would need to be in the, in the ballot to let people know that that's what they're voting on. So that decision would need to be made tonight.
Okay. So then I, I would, I guess I would ask, um, this came up earlier in your presentation. Um, since the Measure G item um does not have a sunset date either, um is there any reason that um the, I think the big, you know, the big um promotion around Measure G was the street repair, the potholes? Uh is there any reason that that should take more than thirty years, and then that, those funds couldn't be applied later to the stormwater?
So at a high level, I would say both projects are exactly like stormwater projects. You build a road, and in thirty years, you may have to repair that road. The need doesn't go away. And so um that is why this revenue source and, and other revenue sources that are really geared towards infrastructure uh are set in a manner because we know we will have to uh care for that infrastructure. Uh when staff and the consultant teams uh sat down to analyze this, it was really looking at, let's not just look at the immediate problem in front of us because then we'll, we'll have that other problem that we didn't pay attention to. And so uh this effort is, is geared toward ensuring that as a community, we have a well-maintained stormwater system that's not flooding, and that's not uh threatening the health of the general fund, that's not uh impacting residents and, and businesses, and developing a structure, uh a, a financial mechanism around to do that and to do that in perpetuity. Uh so we do not have these problems as a community.
Okay, so I, I, I have a, a comment, but I'll hold my comment. Um I'd like to hear some, I'd like to hear from some of my fellow council members on, on how they feel about it since it sounds like that decision does have to be made tonight. Um, and it also sounds like some, we may that we're hearing from some, from, I think, one resident already tonight, but I know I've heard from other residents that that's a deal breaker for them. So um I would like to hear some of their council members. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh Councilmember Mason for the question. Um I, I received those- I've received those as well. And I think, for me, this issue has been deferred for so long that the needs to fix and expand our system is so great that it's going to go on forever, pretty much. 30 years from now, it'll be a different council. That council will be able to decide, and every other council from now on will be able to decide what to do with the money. And my question for staff is, just to clarify, that the amount that we're asking our voters to approve is the maximum that can be assessed in taxes, and that the council could change that. This council, the next council, every year that could be changed, I don't see it really happening, because the need is so great, but the opportunity is there with the council in the future to reduce, if not, reduce the increase totally.
Yes, that is true. This council or future councils will have the ability to reduce the charge on an annual basis, depending on their desires or the amount of money that needs to be recovered, to recover both the capital and the operations cost.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So, I'll talk about my comment on the sunset stuff first, and then my other, then I'll just go into my other comments.
Sure, thank you.
Regarding the sunset, you know, I have a similar opinion. If this was a, if we were funding a $30 million project that we were going to embark on, you know, as soon as it was funded, and it was a project that was a fixed, a fixed thing that we were building, or a fixed thing that we were fixing, and it's going to take us five years, and then the project is over, sunset, you know, putting a sunset on it at that point would make sense. Here, and I'm always going to be in favor of, you know, not having open-ended things. But in this particular case, what would happen in 30 years, if there was a sunset in 30 years for this, is that would reduce the fee all the way back to 1994 level, which is already woefully inadequate in 2021. It's going to be really inadequate in 2051, or whatever year we would put the sunset date in there. So, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. What does make sense to me is, and what I was glad to hear, was that this fee is the max, and that council has discretion to change it. So, if we get to a point, 30 years from now, or 25 years from now, and a future council is looking at the budget, and they see that the stormwater budget is trending up and up, or the stormwater fund is trending up and up and up and up, and they're just getting flushed with money, and we're caught up on all of our projects, and everything is looking good for a projection, then that council can and should take action to reduce the fee. And they, but then they would have the ability to move it back up, you know, if, you know, if needed. I, that makes a lot more sense than just cutting it off, because what will happen, we would be doing what the 1994 council is doing, did to us, which is kicking a terrible decision down the road, and then now, all of a sudden, they're going to, the only way that they're going to be able to fund, that future council will be able to fund the stormwater system, is to come back to the voters and do this whole process again. So, it's not, it's not apples and, it's not apples to apples for me, for the sunset. Just going into my other comments, one thing that I think got a little bit lost was the fact, and maybe it wasn't lost, I think it was addressed, but I want to hit that point again, is that the 30-year horizon for this, where we're not, as I said before, we're not, we're not funding a $30 million project that we're going to embark on immediately. We are, we're funding bonds to pay for this work over a very long period of time, and the part of the point of that was to spread the costs out, so that the current residents of San Bruno don't bear the full burden for this project. Future residents of San Bruno are also going to reap the benefits for this project, and they're also going to bear some of the burden of it. So, that, I think, is an important point to it. And lastly, you know, when, I think I mentioned this in the last meeting, I learned about this issue with the stormwater in my very, very, very first city meeting, or my first interaction with the city after being elected, and before being sworn in. And it was like a kick to the face, and it's like, oh my God, really? Right out of the gate, okay. And looking back at past councils, and past council actions, or past city manager actions in 1994, and then again in 2014, there was a study session that didn't have any action items, so there was nothing for council at that time to vote on. But, you know, this problem was presented, but then it never came back. And that was a massive miss. And back in 1994, putting this, putting the fee in place and having no growth structure built into it, not even for simple inflation or cost of living increases, nothing, just having that be flat, and then allowing it to just sit there for 27 years, and become this inadequate over all that time, yeah, that's terrible. And, but, with all that said, none of that changes where we are. We, no matter where the blame goes, or whatever, we can argue about that till the cows come home, but it doesn't change where we are. And I don't want to have, I don't want this. I don't think any of the five of us want this. I don't think staff wants this. I don't think the city manager wants this, but it's the reality of where we are. And I think we have to do this, because this is how we can, we're going to get San Bruno moving forward.
Thank you. I'm going to check in with, I'm just going to make one quick question or comment, I'm sorry, and then see if Mr. Salazar, then I'll go to Vice Mayor, just to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak, or if they wanted to address anything. To Mr. Hamilton, made a lot of great points. It is also the same thing that the city council took action to suspend, not defer, suspend the water sewer increases. The council has that ability, even though there was a five-year process and plan, we're saying no. And so, this gives that same latitude to us today and us tomorrow. I always think of a neighboring city of ours that passed a fire assessment, and they did a sunset. They've been out three times now, because nobody wants to reduce services in that community, but then in essence, they do it for five years, and then you have to go back to keep doing that. So, that's just something from a neighboring community. Anyway, Mr. Salazar, do you have anything at this moment, other than I'm going to move over to the Vice Mayor?
I'll chime in and agree that this need is not going to go away, and we're essentially not funding a project, not a single project, but we're funding an enterprise. And, you know, it's been almost a decade ago that we set out to properly fund the other two critical enterprises, and we've reaped the benefit of that, where as, a decade ago, we were seeing massive sewer overflows all over the city. Those have been completely dealt with, and we're not seeing those SSOs anymore. And that was, that was a big thing when I first got on the council. We've addressed it, and back then, there was a lot of opposition. There was some, you know, very vocal opposition to raising those fees. And, you know, after, you know, several years of those fees and steady increases, we're at a point where we're comfortable enough that we can throttle back, but it was a council decision this time around to throttle back on this final increase. And I think some future council will probably be able to make the same decision here if we get to that point, but we're so far behind. And I know even back then, we wanted to address storm back then at the same time, but it was, it was a lot to put on the ratepayers at that time. We chose the one that was most critical at the time, the one that was most pressing and really focused on sewer and water at that time, and it was one that we had a little bit more control over, because it didn't have to go on a tax, a property tax, so it was a little easier for us to manage. But the need has been there, we've identified the need, we know, we knew it was coming, that, you know, the amount that was in there, we kind of milked it right down to the wire, because it's, you know, we were able to stretch it out, we deferred a lot of projects, but, you know, we weren't forecasted to go negative right away, but now we're at that point. And so, the timing is critical. And, you know, if we don't do this now, we are going to be negative in that enterprise, and that's something we really can't allow. And so, I'm, you know, I'm going to be voting in favor of moving forward with this, you know. We've had some good input, I believe, from the public. I believe staff has addressed a lot of the questions, and so I am comfortable in moving forward at this time.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to remind the public of what was already said about how a council could decide, which this council did, we suspended the rate increase in water and sewer, because there was enough money in there that it wasn't necessary. Those enterprise funds, in water and sewer, they're sufficient. Okay? Well, the enterprise fund in stormwater is severely insufficient, which is why we're here now, at a terrible time, to address a longstanding problem. It comes down to this. We are trying to maintain and operate our stormwater system in 2021 with $1994. And every year, we are pressing our luck, and in the last couple of years, our luck has been bad. We have costly repairs that directly affect the ability to provide services to our community from our general fund. General fund is police, fire, community service, recreation programs. Each time we're taking a dollar out of our general fund, we have one less dollar to apply it in those needed, necessary programs. So, here is the uncomfortable responsibility that we're facing of stop kicking the can down the road. We are, and this is going to be a little awkward to say, but we're empowering the voters to decide. This isn't a council decision to raise property taxes. This is a decision that the council is empowering the property owners to vote on San Bruno's future. Should we make that tough call, put aside more money into our sewer, our stormwater The reason why I will be voting for this, to raise property taxes on my own property, is because I don't want to see the consequence of us continuing using general fund money for this longstanding problem. So, I know, for some, it's a difficult situation. My father's on a limited income. Taking another 100, 100-plus dollars out of his budget isn't easy, but at least what this council did here is, for that first year, by suspending the water and sewer increases, it matches out for the increase in the property taxes. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go around the virtual room one more time, the Zoom land, and if you can finish up with your comments, and then we'll see what action council wishes to take. Councilmember Mason.
So, I just wanted to follow up on the comment earlier, that I think the council is already taking a huge step forward by starting this process. And I just want to say that I don't think it would diminish any opportunities to move this forward by having any kind of sunset, just because the concern that I have is actually losing the opportunity to move forward, because there's no sunset, versus the emergency needs that we have now to address the problems, because all residents I've spoken to believe we need stormwater repair. And so, any comments that I made are only to really say this is what I've had property owners tell me directly, and to say that, you know, we really need to look at this holistically to make sure that the problems we have today are being addressed now, and that if that means that there is a sunset date, and that's what's needed to move this forward, then I don't feel like there's anything wrong with our residents making that decision again in 30 years. And while we do have the ability to make that decision this year, my, you know, not even two years in office, this council hasn't made the decision as it pertains to water and sewer for the 12-plus years that the rates have been increasing. So, I just want to say that it's really easy to say, I think it's a different thing to actually, to actually do. With that said, I think for me, what really sold me on moving forward with the ballot is one, that we won't be making this decision, the owners of properties that are actually making this decision on what they're going to pay. But it's this quick letter that I just want to share with the public that I think is really eye-opening, it was very eye-opening for me. And it's a letter from the city of San Bruno to a resident who had submitted a complaint about some flooding. And it says, "Thank you for your letter dated November 27, 1982, outlining the need for some drainage improvements. Our city engineer has made a preliminary investigation of the situation, and has also reviewed the city's earlier storm sewer adjustments mentioned in your letter. His conclusion is that some drainage improvement is needed. Please be advised that we will study the problem further to determine the best solution. One solution might be a culvert to the parking lot, as suggested. This potential project will be medium priority one, and probably will be submitted for funding as part of the 1983, 1984 budget. In the meantime, rest assured that I have reminded city crews as to the critical nature of this flooding to your driveway and garage. We have increased our street sweeping effort in your area where seasonal leaf concentration hampers these older, less efficient storm drain inlets. I suggest that you and your neighbor keep a few sandbags handy through the winter as an additional precaution. Thank you again for calling this matter to our attention." And this letter is dated December 6, 1982, and this property owner called in tonight saying that the same issue is on his property 39 years later. So, with that said, I'll definitely be supporting this ballot measure to move forward. I think it's needed, and we'll let the property owners decide.
Thank you. Any final comments, Councilmember Hamilton? Vice Mayor Medina?
I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar?
No, for me, thank you.
And in closing, yes, I am going to support it as well. You know, when I was a kid growing up on San Antonio, when I came home from school, that was fun for a kid, had to take off the shoes and socks, roll up the pants legs, and that's how I got home, the last stretch of the way up into the house, the apartment. And that was because it obviously didn't drain correctly. Obviously, that's obviously many decades ago, and there have been improvements, but there are still other improvements that need to be had, and we get emails from residents who experiencing that in the avenues and other areas, that is still very challenging. And I do believe in our ability to do the bonding and not utilize the general funds, because those are going through essential services, that I think this whole community wants. Delay it, I don't think will fare well, because everything does go up, as we know. You know, on the sunset specifically, the council can, and future councils can determine and have the wherewithal to see where they're at with that enterprise fund. And this enterprise fund needs to be able to cover its business. It hasn't been raised in a long time. It hasn't been raised in a long time. And I think, you know, I don't want to repeat everything Councilmember Hamilton said, but you are really dealing with dollars of those times for dollars of today. And there needs to be some system set in place, and it's not an easy choice for a council or for staff, go to its community. But I think the need has been shown, and I think it's important. We have to meet state standards. And I just want to know that the city staff, you know, or all the other agencies together on this, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Regional Board, all those folks that are part of this process that need to be on board too for what we're going to embark upon. Now, we have to work in unison, and we have to all make sure we're hitting the mark. I just wanted to ask staff that quick.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a quick interruption. If we could get a report from the city clerk regarding whether there were any additional protests that were dropped off at City Hall before the close of the public hearing?
Okay.
There were no additional protest letters dropped off at City Hall.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, based on that, the city council could, if it chooses to adopt the resolution, make the finding that there has not been a majority protest. That is stated in the resolution, but just wanted to confirm that for the city council.
Appreciate that. And City Manager, to my question on the other agencies?
Absolutely. With all stormwater projects, we consult with all required permitting agencies, and we will certainly continue to do that as well as partner with the new countywide agency looking at sea level rise and resiliency.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've gone through. So at this point, this is a resolution, and you heard also comment, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hamilton.
And I apologize for not taking this earlier, but the one thing I want to reiterate for folks listening regarding this whole process with the protest first and then the ballots going out and all of that. Because I just, it just struck me when you're, when the city attorney was brought that up. Some of the comments that I have seen seem to indicate that that people were thinking that the city made up this process arbitrarily. And that's not true. This, we're following Proposition two eighteen, state mandated process for how to conduct this entire operation in terms of, and that goes to not just how we're doing it, but the thresholds and all of that. This is all state mandated process that we're following. I just wanted to, I don't think that was brought up tonight. I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
I think that's a great point, and thank you for bringing that up because I've seen an email or two. So this is a, this went on a state initiative ballot that was passed by the voters of the state of California. And so therefore, the cities, all city municipalities must follow this process and the guidelines set forth by the state that measured that was passed in Prop two eighteen. So thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Okay, with that, this is a resolution. And is there any action from council?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
I think you second.
Thank you, Salazar, Medina. On the resolution, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? This is without the sunset. I just want to make sure, as is, as is written.
You're correct.
Okay, and I. Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I have it down as a five-oh vote, and the resolution passes. Thank you to city staff. Thank you to the public for being with us this evening as well. Appreciate your comments and your participation. City Manager, is there anything else that's needed in regards to our study session and special meeting tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay, with that, then I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P.M., which will be via Zoom. Thank you all, and enjoy and be safe for the rest of the week.
Good night.
Good night.